...approval. At no point does 2.5% influence how costs actually increase. At no point does this go to risk target. It's just a cutoff point afterwards the budget decision no longer relevant to elected officials. And as if we have turned that number into an unbreakable line, it's costing us. For FY21 of the budget, when the budget cuts down after COVID FY25, the Essex operating budget is lag inflation by 2.5%. And real dollars, that means if the budget had simply kept up with inflation, it would be about $500,000 to $700,000 higher than it is today. No longer we have shortcuts. As these leaders have talked about the price of failed deliver resolutions, at public meetings, the current chair of finance committee is jokingly offering a threat for hope that no family with children moved to town. I'm not kidding, you say, or actually said out loud. What pride for real ideas, even as recently as January 25th, joint and community of Manchester, they strongly define a clear and executed course of action. I will give you one of the only solution to our work. And I have to pass an override, not the fiscal 5%, but town operating budget overhaul. I realize they don't want to raise taxes, but we're at that point. Reset and recover, bring the budget in line with real cost of goods and services, address our problems, then move past them. Further, I suggest that any tax increase program that helps support aging communities such as TAC before COVID only, I would pay more to help them because I am required to raise their COVID on children. For this work, it requires being fully compliant with town leadership. It requires to get them to protect, to get behind it 100% and actively campaign for it, not just stand-stay, play it to a bottom line. Pass an override, this is your responsibility, please, or step aside, we apply singular advice.
He inspired me to say something because I know a lot of you are super powerful in your time, I'm also fearful in four of our leaders, does take a lot of time. I agree with what he said. But the reason I'm standing here is because I'm a primary care pediatrician and all I do all day long is talk to parents about the health and wellbeing of their kids. And I've had a couple of experiences recently that really honestly scared the crap out of me, directly related to education in our surrounding communities. Specifically, I've had parents in several surrounding communities, not our district, but North Shore communities, whose districts have failed to pass overreps to support their school budget over the last few years. And these parents have come to my office saying, my kids are struggling in school. They've lost so many services and the budget cuts have been so big that these kids are not having their needs met. And it just, it's a real life thing that happens and could happen here. And I just don't want to see that happen here. And whether it's 5.4% or 9%, I 100% agree that we have to pass it over and we need our leadership to support that. I think two years ago, wasn't it now, that we had an override on the table in Essex and we didn't pass it? I do know there are people that didn't support it, that's real, and I respect them. But I think there were more people that did support it who didn't realize the dire consequences and didn't show up. And I think if it were on the ballot again, it would go differently. So I just, I really commend this community again for their hard work and I just support the highest level of education possible with the due diligence and responsibility as well as I know you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, start, yes, please.
Sorry.
Oh yeah, sorry guys, probably said it too fast. I think that's the key. 35 left in the quarter essence.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Robbie Millsberry. I live at 126 Eastern Avenue in Essex. I'm also a high school teacher, I've been out of 26 years. Just want to echo some wonderful words there. You know, as a parent with a child in the district and also as a 26-year teacher in foreign language, we have seen a lot of cuts. We've seen a lot of amazing heartfelt work to try and make things, you know, work within the constraints that are kind of thrust upon us of 2.5%. You can't continue to go 2.5%, 2.5%, 2.5% because schools are growing, their needs are growing. Think of as a human being, how much inflation we have seen. It's just untenable to keep everything. It's normal to have overreps. They have it in tons of the communities and Essex hasn't had one. 2004, since 2004, I feel like it's high time that we kind of give the full budget. 100% budget is a number that's thrown out. I feel like our community in Essex would support that. I agree, I forgot their name, but I agree that I feel like that energy is there to pass a higher level support. As a foreign language teacher, I've seen, you know, a robust K through 12 program, little by little being chipped away and that was second grade through 12 and now they got eliminated from the elementary school and then it's been eliminated from the, you know, the middle school. As a teacher, my department chair and I were just talking at lunch the other day. We're seeing the difference in our kids. They're not as equipped as they need to be. We do an amazing job dealing with what we have and we love it. But it was better before. And if we continue to chip away at the amazing things that happen in this school, it's not going to be a great place, I think, a beautiful school. These are facilities manager, you are going to, I mean, I feel like your analogy with a family that's trying to make it and cut corners here or whatever, the water pump is going to burst or whatever and that's going to be a huge cop down the road. If we eliminate jobs like that, that's also, you know, a tough thing. Also having a high school principal dedicated to the high school, a middle school principal dedicated to the middle school. Those are things that help kids, you know, achieve. And I really feel like we should support it with a full budget.
Good evening. My name is Sally Berkowitz, 22 Friends Street, Manchester. I'm happy to be here before you tonight. I'm a lifelong community member of Manchester. I grew up here, I went to school here, I worked in this district and I care deeply about the educational experiences and outcomes of our students. My family made the choice to leave Brooklyn, New York about 10 years ago and we made that choice to be back in this community, to be here, our family, to be a part of this community, but most importantly, to experience the educational opportunities that this district has to offer. This district has offered a high-quality educational experience since the early 80s when my family was here almost 40 years ago. I have two daughters, one who's getting ready to be promoted to high school, getting ready to pick those classes that we were just talking about, and one who's in fourth grade who's humming right along the town. During my days, I spent my time leading learning initiatives at Cornell University for non-traditional students. These include students from High One High School across our country as well as working professionals who are seeking to off-skill and reskill and possibly change in careers. I have a unique vantage point of being able to see both what it takes to get accepted into a institution like Cornell University as well as those emerging needs that our workforce is going to be facing today and into the future. I've been following along these budget conversations over the past five years. It's become apparent to me that being an informed citizen is critical to supporting the needs of our community and this district. Over the past five years, I have heard very few, but very vocal voices express a desire to construct our budget and vision for our graduates around the specific financial constraints of our community. In meeting this need, we have effectively reduced as far as possible the number of cuts that can be made, primarily through attrition of our staff. The modest average 3.4% budget increases have not kept pace with inflation or the rising cost of healthcare. These external factors should not be having such a dramatic impact on the programming we offer our students. They should not change power. Manchester and Essex share a vision of our graduate and the mission of our school. What is the mission of our school? For those of you who aren't here or are here, I have a light theme. The mission of the Manchester Essex Regional School District is to provide a high-quality, comprehensive, student-centered educational experience that prepares them for a post-secondary educational or service experience, a career and a life as an engaged member of society. We speak together about our shared vision of a graduate. What is included in a shared vision of a graduate? What are those shared values that we have between our communities that we define together? We together believe the development of our community is to become empathetic global citizens, responsible collaborators, critical thinkers, effective communicators, personally accountable citizens, innovators, creators, and to be socially and emotionally aware. As I look at both the proposed 2.5% and 5.4% budgets, this vision is becoming harder to see. Both of these versions result in cuts, which these cuts at this point, as Manchester shared with us, will impact our programming, will impact the programming we offer. And the programming that I accepted when I relocated my family here 10 years ago, leaving New York City, amazing school opportunity there to come here, be in a community school and share these visions with my fellow community members. I'm disappointed that our communities have let us get to something to pinpoint. It's unacceptable to continue using reserves to cover expenses. These should only be used for significant unanticipated expenses and capital improvements. It no longer feels like this district has a written self. With this in mind, I support a 9% budget increase. In my view, we need a bold move to ensure we stay on track with our vision of a graduate. Year over year, we have struggled to keep level services. 9% keeps all current staffing in place with modest addition institution incentives. I also think we should look more closely at other sources of revenue and see where we can take in more. While I decrease the number of schools through the district, I urge the community to increase in school choices in a way to offset the increasing operating budget. Noting that the pursuit of not my course anyway, these courses are already running. It's incremental additional revenue that offsets costs. By increasing school choice, then each course that's set at a certain part of all others can be run, or students can select courses that meet their run from goals and also can expose them to topics that they might not have thought would be available to them. Pursue choices that they didn't know might be their interests. We're running the courses anyway, wanting to give it our ability to create larger class sizes and realize the economic benefits. I'd like to see school choice increase so we can keep enriching each courses and increase the opportunity to hear more diverse viewpoints that represent individuals regardless of where they come from. Our budget has a modest number of 20 students. Why are we living this constraint in place? I support a budget that maintains our facilities. It is our obligation as two communities to take care of the assets we have invested in over the years. As my oldest starts to move into high school, she's thinking about the courses that will distinguish her from others when it comes time to consider college. She's thinking about the classes she should take now in ninth grade to set her on a path to access the niche AV courses that our community offers. She's looking to stand apart and rise to her educational potential. Please hear my request for a 9% budget this year. I want to maintain the breadth of course offerings at a high school level and make sure that we develop students and stand apart from others. Thank you.
I know I've already spoke about something earlier, so I apologize. It took me so much to get out of the house this evening. Like we had so many babysitters, it was all lined up. And if anybody's ever worked with our family, they understand why, which is that, no, I mean, this is like real, right?
Your name and address, I'm sorry.
Oh, come on. Sophia Johansson, haven't figured it out. Bennett Street in Manchester. And I also have a business on Eastern Avenue in Essex. I'm probably one of the few families in the district that has three kids with disabilities, two who have developmental disabilities, and one of the few families that has had a kid at Essex Elementary, Manchester Memorial, has had a kid in the swing program, has had a kid in Earl, and has a kid in the yet-to-be-named, whatever they're doing with great inclusion at Memorial right now. And I want to give huge kudos, really big kudos to the administrators because to have those types of programs, you have to have gems of administrators. Yeah, I know, like, but still, it's real, okay? Now, this is, my, our family is reliant on the public schools. Not everybody in our community is and not everybody in our community needs to rely on them because they can't afford private school tuition or they have the mental bandwidth of a homeschooling parent or all of that, which I definitely will never be, even though I did it for eight months when one of my kids is on medical leave. And I'm just coming here to say that 9% is a level services budget. 9% is educational equity. We are facing health insurance costs, rising spend on education costs, all of that stuff because of lack of real organizing on the part of a lot of things that state level to push it to the fess. Okay? IDEA, what is it like? It's barely covers the cost of real special education. And thank God for the circuit breaker, which everybody advocated for, which got a lot more money going, which included transportation, right? That was a huge difference. Many of you know what I'm talking about. And what that means is like, one of my kids goes to the school on a van and they're in a lot of around the van to keep everybody safe. That costs like a billion dollars. It's way more than a local service. It's true because we have, we look into limos and hiring limos instead of paying for special education, for special class transportation. And the cost of fragile is incredible. So what I'm seeing at Memorial is a really beautiful thing. And I just want to say, this is a really, really important experience. 10 years ago, when we first moved here and my son was attending Essex Elementary, my son was on the playground at Manchester Memorial. And it was like maybe 20 kids running around the playground. And it was so fascinating because I could see the kids right away who went to Essex Elementary and kids who went to Manchester Memorial. And the difference was that the kids who were at Essex Elementary knew how to play with my son. My super aggressive, verbally out there son, they still remember him. That year that he was on medical leave, two of his friends still made Valentines and brought them in, even though he had been out of school for two months. Okay? I don't think you understand the significance of that because my son does not have friends. He does not have a friend. And it's not because he's not worthy of it. It's because he's too, he's very easily misunderstood. He still deserves a place in a community and he still deserves a really high quality education. The same way that Essex kids deserve a late bus. They deserve to get home, right? Well, now what I'm seeing is I'm seeing Memorial at Memorial with my youngest, who also has a similar diagnosis to my eldest, I'm seeing these absolutely incredible relationships happen. We're out trick-or-treating. Now, if you've met my youngest, you know she's like the mayor of Memorial. She's like super outgoing, she's super cute. So different to be raising a really friendly, cute little girl than it is to be raising a tall, stinky teenager, but sure I'll who that, you've got those two in your family. And I just want to say that inclusive education, the way this district does it, is insurmountably incredible in comparison to the way that it's done in other places. Your kids are all learning skills that are going to carry them through their careers, everything. It's incredible to watch these kids interact with my daughter and we're out trick-or-treating and everybody knows her name and it's incredible. I don't see that continuing without a 9% increase in our budget. My kids need this whole district. I, my business needs a good school district because when I'm firing high schoolers to shovel things, it's really important that they understand what they're doing. It doesn't sound like a brilliant thing, but I guarantee you that, well, I mean, we need to be thinking about our young people as an educated workforce. And we need to be thinking about all of these opportunities that we're taking away from the kids who are Title I and the kids whose families can't afford to send them out, that can't afford the tutors to subsidize what the school can't do anymore. To be frank, I wouldn't be surprised if any of our testing scores or any of our placement scores didn't really budge in spite of this budget because so many families can afford to supplement that public education. But here's the thing, is that only in good public schools does every kid who shows up at that door is guaranteed an education. None of my kids can go to private school and be guaranteed an education. They don't even have to interview them because they have disabilities and they can discriminate against them, not in public school. And that's why I'm standing here begging you, begging you to consider pushing for a 9% increase. And I will, I swear to you, I would drag my kids along with me. I would walk door to door through Essex and Manchester and campaign on behalf of every single elected official that comes out in support of our schools. And I will campaign against anybody who goes against this because that's what it's taking at this point. We have, we have an amazing opportunity to have really strong schools. So please, understand.
Don't be shy, anyone?
Hi, I'm Lexi Banks. I'm at 44th Street. That's a really important to follow and appreciated hearing your, appreciate you sharing your experiences. So I feel strongly that Manchester Essex cannot endure further cuts without affecting our kids' education. We've lost so many positions with retirements, attritions, deficiencies. I'm particularly concerned about changing the middle high school model. Not that we're purposely changing it, but inadvertently because of financial factors rather than pedagogical ones. We heard already about 15% of students cannot access the digital literacy courses. I'm afraid even more courses are cut and they'll have even less access to courses than they need. I'm even more concerned about drawing down district reserves and living off the savings. But, and I believe 9% budget is the best for kids and would vote for it. However, given the financial circumstances for both towns and having listened to this committee deliberate in recent meetings, I am resigned to accept that a 5.4% budget is a compromised budget. And that is a likely reality and that our kids' education is going to be affected. You're going to have to continue to advocate for our public schools in the coming months and years to get back what we are losing. Prepare yourselves for it. However, with this acceptance, I also want to call for partnership. In order for our school district to function properly, it needs the support of our entire MERSD community when it comes to advocating and funding our schools. We're at the end of a tenure cycle of robust override that normally takes place in high-performing districts every 10 years or every five years or so. A finance committee meeting the other day, superintendent said we're barely getting by year to year. And the town of Essex continues to request a 2.5% budget increase in spite of inflation and cost of living increases that make this number unrealistic. And yet, we need a new or renovated school building for Essex Elementary School. As a Manchester resident, I vocally advocated for Essex Elementary to feed the ability study at our town meeting last spring. Several Manchester residents made a comment against it for the valid concern about debt rolling off from previous projects and major capital projects coming up in town. I made a public comment to go to bat for EBS. I said, EBS is in desperate need of a refresh or rebuild. It needs a new roof, new windows, boilers failing, there's standing water in the basement. I encourage the Manchester town meeting to think about our district as a united community. Our children are in it together. I said our size helps us to be a top school district in the country and our size comes from the partnership we have between our towns. A new elementary school for Essex is the right thing for our district community and therefore it is the right thing for our town, the town of Manchester. And it passed. I've heard too much from the Essex Finance Committee about our school building, what is in the end simply a shell, and almost nothing about supporting the educational programming that goes on inside of it or into the other school buildings in our district. This way of thinking about Essex versus Manchester in a tit for tat is not what is best for our children and it has to end. The buildings we're building in order of need. Essex Elementary is in the pipeline. It has my support and the support of many people in Manchester. I would go for Essex Elementary and will keep going to bat for it because I care about the children of our MERSD community, both Essex and Manchester together, getting an excellent education in functional and safe buildings. The compromise in cut 5.4% budget that draws 500,000 from reserves after 350,000 from reserves last year does not set us up for success when it comes to favorable borrowing terms for a new Essex Elementary budget. It puts us in a hole where we need to draw even more for reserves next year because the district, this 5.4% is a compromise budget that even if it has cuts, will require people to advocate and get out to vote for it at town meeting, at the town of Essex town meeting and in the ballot, in the Manchester town meeting as well. I don't know, it sounds like we might not need an override. And yet it's on the high end of what other towns can afford. Town leaders need to be hearing from the MERSD community that we support at minimum the 5.4% budget or if you support it, the 9% budget because it is what is best for our kids, Essex kids and Manchester kids. It is the best for our MERSD community. Thank you.
You have, I guess, is there any public comment in the chat or any?
One person has their hand raised.
Okay. So how it would work online is that if you do want to make a public comment, please put that in the chat, your name and address, and we'll start calling you as we filter it back and forth between in person and online. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin McShara. I'm at 27 Martin Street in Essex. I would like to voice my support for the budget to come in at the 9% level to continue level services. I have a first grader and a rising kindergartner here at Essex Elementary and I volunteer my time on Friends of Essex Elementary. It has been eye-opening to me to see how much our teachers are doing with the limited resources they have. And here in Essex with the degrading facility, it's, it's terrible, nervous.
Is it in person?
Yeah. In the construction industry, I will echo the need for a dedicated
Call in.
So that our beautiful facilities are well taken care of and a few Jurassic Elementary is as well. I am in support of the 9% budget, not just for the sake of our educational program and our children, but in support of our incredible educators and administrators who live and work in our communities and surrounding areas. As a small business owner in town, I know the struggles of rising inflation and cost of living and healthcare. We all know this and are managing it in our households. And this is the reality we are having to live in. And I believe that a healthy, high-performing school is an asset to a community and I urge school community to support both our children and our staff. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Giselle Unes. I live at 27 Martin Street in Essex. A slightly different tone than everyone else. Aside from the stark differences in Christmas concerts between our two elementary schools is the fact that the district has been providing two different types of elementary education. MCAS scores show this for years to the point where COVID highlighted highlighted these differences so much that no one could deny it, which is why the school committee last year approved fund instructional coaches for the district to use where they were needing Which is why the school committee last year approved fund instructional coaches for the districts to use where they were needing most, primarily in E E S. Now, after a wonderful interim principal for two years and these coaches, E E S M C A S scores have soared. We are at a crisis point in time where the country is, in my opinion, in a horrible transition. And experts are predicting the cost of basically everything will go up. And now, some are saying the only way to move our districts forward is an override, so basically continue to pay more for less. No, thank you. I'm not against an override, if you can prove to me the inequity in elementary education is being addressed beyond elementary school. The E E S kids that were in elementary school during COVID now have less opportunities available to them in middle and high school because of those past inequities. How are we going to address these inequities in education now that these kids are out of elementary school? Now the D E I has been essentially erased from the federal government, do we just stop paying attention? If we were doing it right, then there should be a proportional number of kids from each elementary school in accelerated math, A P courses and the like. If we are doing it right, then the growing class sizes at Memorial could easily be alleviated by busing some of those kids to E E S. Do we have parents in these larger class sizes willing to volunteer to send their kids to E E S to help alleviate this issue? A bus, I think, is far cheaper than hiring an additional F T E and doesn't require lifetime benefits. Prove me wrong. Show me E E S middle schoolers are on level ground with their memorial peers in math, science and English. Show me a willingness to comb in both E E S and memorial educational experiences so much that you can't tell where these kids went to elementary school, then we can have a conversation about an override. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Kusuri, I'm on the sixth row in Manchester, so I'm going to go on to talk a bit in here. So, William University President George Stone, American University, that's where some of my students went. I'm going, I'm pretty sure St. Louis, so the university. All of these students could go there because they got an amazing education. I have a daughter in seventh grade, she enters the district before grade. And she has been absolutely happy and I am straight with all of the misreadings she had so far. In the world, no one has succeeded million kids to have access to proper education. And education is a privilege, I think, we need to share with it. And keep it as we can see, so where it's going in the inner direction and it's carried day after day or maybe not for me. And we even don't know where we are going to be next year, going in the race is coming. So I need to support the nine percent budget raise. I think the taxes is where we can see where the money is going when it does. Contrary to our federal taxes, regardless where they are going these days. And, sorry, I'm seeing with my glasses. I think I think contrary to the previous comments when we teach, I'm also teaching, we told many of those Essex students or Manchester students, the after students, and we want them to succeed, hopefully to. And I was a little confused, I don't know if you have any problem. Scheduled for next year, but coming in two weeks, Christmas or something like this. Not long. People just think they're paying for vacation, but I, some kids can die very rested. And we really have these six weeks that goes through the past. So the, the students were very rested and it was really good, so.
Into the dedication in my house, I guess.
I promise to be shorter than, sorry.
Your name and address.
Alright, my name is Jennifer Meechaw, I'm a social studies teacher, Ellen Rowley, if you want to know. I'm a social studies teacher at the high school and this is my fifteenth year at M E R H S. First, I'm being acknowledged that budget season is not a fun time of year for any of us, especially you. So thank you for being here tonight to listen to the thoughts and concerns of the community. I hope you take these anxieties to heart and do your part to rally the community to support increased funding to the district. I hope everyone in this room and listening at home does the same. I am here tonight to address one specific component of the proposed budget, the reallocation of high school teaching conditions to elementary and middle school and the impact it will have on students. This reallocation is mentioned on the, on page four of the proposed budget, the staff and capital request summary. Summary, we declare that these requests align with strategic district and school improvement plans and are aimed to support student achievement. I disagree. One of these allocations is to reintroduce oral languages to the sixth grade program of studies, which I enthusiastically support and does not require a teacher losing their job. The second reallocation, however, does. There are currently two departments in high school that have six members. One of these departments has four years of courses required to graduate. The other requires three point five, potentially three, depending on your vote on the high school graduation requirements at the next meeting. Based on this information, it appears the couple most likely come from the department with the current three point five year graduation requirement, which is the social studies department. The social studies department experienced a cut in the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. This cut resulted in five less sections of courses the social studies department could offer students. This prevents our department from operating evidence based argumentation, diverse American stories and current global topics. It also led to two less sections of required classes driving up class size. This year, I teach two sections of U S history of one honors and both of these sections have twenty five students. This is a violation, sorry, that's like a really like strong word. This is in disagreement with the school committee's goal for nineteen to twenty two students in high school course sections defined on page fifteen of the most recent Unit A collective bargaining agreement. These class side guidelines exist in order to provide a high quality educational experience to students. However, as class sizes increase, the quality of education decreases. In these large sections, I am unable to provide timely feedback to students on their work. Larger classes need more student quality in a period, which I love, but needs to increase in the amount of, of class time necessary to cover required content. It's more student behaviors to manage. Every class sizes make it harder to build relationships with students. And if you read any current educational article or textbook, the way to solve all problems in education is to build relationships with the students. As you can see, cuts to teaching positions lead positions to be made lethal, less opportunities for students in larger class sizes. If another social studies position is lost this year, cuts cannot be made to sections of our core classes since they are already at max capacity. The only five sections to cut would be from electives. The social studies department offers some of the most popular and successful elective courses in the high school. These include sociology, basic history and ourselves, and nine eleven and the war on terror, psychology, as well as A P, psychology, comparative government and United States government and politics. Almost all of these elective courses reach maximum capacity consistently each year. Stella, how many people are in your A P go section? Say it's like twenty five? Twenty five, exactly correct. I lost my spot. This year, we offer eleven sections of these electives combined and next year we would only be able to offer six. Students are not going to be able to take the classes they want to due to the inability of our department to offer adequate sections to match demand. Social studies department A Ps are essentially an open door and many students take their only A Ps in the social studies department. There is been talk about the social studies department should offer both A P micro and A P macroeconomics because a small number of students are taking those classes online independently this school year. With this potential cut, we would be unable to adequately provide opportunities to take courses already in our program of studies as previously mentioned. Never mind adding additional courses. The last two people up here mentioned the status of a mar world and cutting A P specifically A P U S government and politics would be terrible for lack of better terminology. So thank you for your consideration.
Nadia, let's start, this is Hill Road in Manchester. I want to start, Pam, I thank you for all the work you've been doing and been participating in these meetings throughout your year. And anything other than a nine percent budget increase, this means we keep hunting, we keep looking, what else can we cut? How else can we do things up? Some of the proposals to me seem penny wise, not foolish, like the idea that we would get rid of the director of facilities. Having someone who's on top of things allows you to address issues when you're small. Without that position, I think we would ask people to step up and try to fill in. That's not the same. So you're going to lose, you're not going to be paying as much attention simply because that person isn't there anymore. And you're going to find that when you do finally realize this is an issue, it's a much bigger issue, much more expensive. So I just don't see that as a physically responsible way to run the school. And I get you're trying to do what you can to see, could we present a lower increase budget? The other thing is, I echo what I said a few years ago when I was before this group, and that is handling move to Manchester from Germany. A big reason, or the main reason I should say the move to Manchester by the sea was because at the time, the general manager of the company I worked for, Gary Rosen, who lives in Manchester, told me, you've got to come here, we've got the best school district in the area. And for three kids who were all at that point elementary or below, that was top of mind for me. I've been really happy with the way the district has performed and our kids there, they have differing needs. I'd say one chore coming I see in the district that I think it will be exacerbated is that for high performing students, there are fewer and fewer options. Class sizes increase and it makes it harder for them to get the attention they need. As the social studies department teacher was saying, it also means electives can't be offered, special classes can't be offered, and that's a real that diminishes the world, if you will, for students who are interested and eager to learn, as my current ninth grader is. Some of the A P classes were fundamental to my son's awakening, he's a freshman now at U S Amers. He was lucky, he took five A P classes. Did so well that now he's going to be able to graduate with two degrees because of the predators he's getting through those A P scores. So it's opening again opportunities that otherwise wouldn't have. If we keep cutting or not increasing the budget to accommodate the growth that we need, it's not going to have those opportunities. Future students are not going to graduate with the skills and knowledge and abilities that my now freshman, college freshman has. And you're just going to be up here again next year saying, okay, so healthcare, they could help if the cost of increase this much. Well, now we can't happen to reserves because guess what, we've already done it and we basically have nothing left. We have no more programs to cut. So you're just hunting that issue for next year. And I'm happy to come again next year and speak again, but I think this is such a disservice to Pam, to you, to school committee members who are trying to do the best they can, to our teachers, to our administrators. So I urge you, please do not shy away and urge the towns to approve the nine percent budget increase. Thank you.
Here we are, are you able to hear us on line? And if you'd like to, okay, great, go ahead.
Thank you.
And just progress, please.
Um, my name is Carrie McDonald Shaw. I'm actually a teacher in the middle school and I live in Rockport. So, good evening. I've spent the last fourteen years of my career, and I'm at the end of my career, in the middle school's intensive reading and written language program under the skillful leadership of Superintendent Bowden and Dr. Collins. I'm here tonight to read a statement on behalf of the middle school faculty based on the budget discussions. Before I begin though, we'd like to publicly thank Principal Mayno for her years of commitment and dedication to the children, staff and families at Manchester Essex Middle School. As Superintendent Bowden expressed at the last meeting, filling her shoes would be a monumental task. We love her and will greatly miss her guidance next year. So here is our statement. As the middle school educators, we want to express our strong support for maintaining the middle school model in Manchester Essex. As we believe it is critically important to recognize young adolescents' developmental needs and characteristics and ensure that our middle school provides the best environment for their academic, social and emotional growth. The core of the middle school model is the concept of teaming. Middle school students thrive in an environment with supportive relationships. Our grade level and exploratory teams, where students have the same group of teachers for core subjects, meet during team time to discuss students and plan instruction. Teaming creates a smaller family-like environment that allows teachers to know your child and provide personalized support. It also fosters a student's ability to build relationships with their teaching team. Middle schoolers undergo significant physical, emotional and cognitive changes. And the middle school model ensures that the learning environment promotes their development. Our students grow in learning environments that stretch, support and motivate them. Our teachers leverage the middle school model to collaborate on student centered and project based learning. Teaming also ensures educators can create extracurricular opportunities within the school day based on the needs of a middle school child. These offerings encourage students to explore interests that contribute to their well-rounded development. Over the past several years, based on the New England League of Middle Schools recommendations paid for by the district, the middle school instituted me blocks and clubs where students have time to connect with peers and teachers outside of the demands of the classroom. Finally, and most importantly, our middle school model helps students transition smoothly from elementary to high school by gradually increasing academic rigor and personal responsibility while providing needed social emotional support. This support leads to academic success. Teaming is foundational to our middle school teachers and fostering independence while offering essential student support. Our district has long been committed to providing a high quality, middle level education that recognizes and respects the needs of young adolescents. We urge the school committee to consider the extensive research and proven benefits of the middle school model as they make decisions that will shape the future of our schools and students and urge citizens to support a budget that preserves this model. Like all of you, we aspire to give your children the education they deserve. Thank you for your time and commitment to our schools.
I'm going to be to the press, Manchester. First, just thanks to everyone, I know it's a long work to come into this, and you consider all the options that are available. I'll just say I agree with everything that's been said about support for the budget. I fully support a nine percent budget increase. Other things that I thought about. One, we have three options, two reduction, one keeping the status quo. I didn't see an option for an increased budget beyond nine percent. I know nine percent's a lot this year, but just take that as more support for things to think about going forward in the future. What are the additional things that we can add that may be helpful for, for students to continue? You know, to, to advance, I think, and for support for teachers as well. And the other thing I'll say, it's been tough down a little bit, but we have to say, acute issue here for this year at nine percent. Thinking ahead, because again, we're going to be, these are the things that are going to come up all the time. Two and a half percent is just not enough. Like if you just look at a story from the last forty years, so it's not wrong. So is there a way that we could think about overrides, it's one day we look at every five or ten years, is there a way we could plan just every year to look at and say, look, we need at least one percent, to get three and a half percent. That makes it more powerful, but it just feels like planning process standpoint, maybe there's a way that we can sort of manage that, give it to the, I mean, there's always prepare, know, that's kind of because again, two and a half is not enough for the system to work with and to handle increases that are required to just make it in the status quo. And the healthcare issue is mentioned is, again, something to think about creatively, I'll say that we're doing that. It's a beginning to get that, think about how do we keep that as check as we can just to help other, you know, other areas that could use the money. So, but again. appreciate everybody's work on this. It's a ton of work that makes it consider. Um, but hopefully you're hearing a lot of support for at least maintaining this and thinking about even how you do potentially more. Thanks a lot.
Chris, there are a lot of um, questions in the chat. Everyone, if you want to. We should use the chat.
Sure. Yeah. So the chat is to uh, everyone in the chat. Uh, we're not answering direct questions in the chat. If you'd like to make a comment and then ask a question, you know, you can do that, but uh, it's not possible for us to be chatting and answering questions during the meeting.
Are they putting in to speak? Is that what they're doing? No, they're asking.
Good evening. My name is Brian Parker. I am an outsider. My family moved to Manchester, Forty Fine Street uh, this past summer. We came down from Central being, I've got family connections here my whole life. So I still live over the area and always knew that I wanted my family here. I follow a little bit of what's happened in the district over the last couple of years, uh, but um, please forgive me, I'm not nearly as knowledgeable as everybody else in the room, sure. Um, I want to offer out some, but they were radical idea of compromise, uh, which probably isn't legal and it was that easy. It would have already happened. The district I came from, if you drove from one end of it to the other, it took you a solid forty minutes. So is rural. Much, much different than here. And um, smaller class sizes, and we're excited both, possibly with smaller class sizes. We have a second grader and a kindergarten and preschooler, and their class sizes at Manchester Memorial are not small. But quickly to the compromise. And I know this isn't popular, uh, but I think both sides have to give uh, at some point. Uh, my thought is scrap the idea of building a new school in Essex and apply that cost savings towards budget. Obviously, that's where the legality comes into it. Uh, but um, I personally would much rather drive my children fifteen or twenty minutes to school and have small class sizes, diverse class offerings. Be able to reward the educators the way we want to, et cetera, et cetera. I'd much rather have that than spend tens of million dollars on the facility. And uh, I don't know, maybe it's something that um, people can work together on. Thank you.
Hi, Sarah, I live at Southern Rock Road in Essex. So I support the nine percent budget increase for many reasons stated very elementally here before me. But my message is directed to the town leaders of Essex. I urge you to not only support override that endorses a nine percent budget increase, but an override that invests in the town of Essex. It is needed for our elderly. It is needed to pay our town employees a competitive wage. If you truly support the vision of the graduate as well as a vibrant community for Essex families. Um, for our elderly, for those who are single and those who are newly married, trans, and businesses in Essex. Please do not position an override as something that is only needed to support our schools. To talk about the old against beyond those with fewer resources, against those of means, those without children and those who are doing their branch. And please do not hit Essex against Manchester. It will be a disservice to every single Essex resident if you go down this path. And it most certainly and very noticeably will fail the youth in both of our communities. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment tonight?
I could have some good questions when you could choose to answer them. But you're not passing things now. You're doing this hard for. And I'm wondering, are you doing any sort of collaboration with the two towns on this?
Trying to, yes, we are trying to establish what we're calling the number crunchers group. Yeah, to get together and just not talk philosophy or policy, but just through some financial modeling. So we're in the process of putting that together.
Okay.
Just so everyone knows, it's reps from, so it would be Michelle, the town administrators, and then two reps from each of the boards in our finance.
Um, I mean, we're only going to solve this collaboratively and um, it may not be this year. I guess I really will focus on this building and how strategically you're going to put things out there for funding, because I'm not necessarily convinced that a Manchester voter will support rebuilding of this school if we don't pass it on right. So if I aren't allowed. Worked on a lot of these things and we have to solve a problem and you're not going to do it by yourself. So, thank you. This sucks. It's going to suck for a while and we're going to have gossip that we have to take care of soon too. Oh, any comment? I remember when we moved here, everybody in Manchester was fighting to get their kid to Essex Elementary. Like, everybody wanted their kid in Essex Elementary. And I was like, yes, we're grabbing that fifteen minutes. And let me tell you, that fifteen minute drive when you only have a single car and it breaks down is a real bitch. So I really believe that this town loses its own elementary school. Every neighborhood needs a neighborhood of school. And I think it would be a shame to not have a beautiful community in this town. So I'm a Manchester voter. I will knock on doors on behalf of the new building for Essex because I will, I would, I would send my kids here. I was really disappointed that they would spend the swing over this anymore. Because I was looking forward to potentially being in this. So contrary to popular belief now, Essex Elementary is a travel and it's the best kept secret over our shore. There's no one else in the chat. Would you take the questions and do an F A Q based on that?
My door.
No, just so they just don't. So they don't go what? We need to follow the needs.
There are two people with their hands raised in the chat. I'm not sure if they are hoping to speak here. If that was a parent's.
If you would like to make a comment uh, and you're online, please do put your name and address into the chat.
Hi, I'm just, I did want to make a comment. I'm not familiar with the Webex um, setup. So I don't know how to do that in this chat, but I would like to make a comment when it's feasible.
Yeah, name and address, yeah.
Hi, yeah, Sarah Pierce, uh, Nine Friends Street. I first would like to thank the school committee for taking on this very challenging time. Um, it seems like nobody wants to shortchange our kids for sure. And I would say as a parent who has a ninth grader that our most challenging years were in middle school. And I cannot imagine that without a principal those years. I think it's a volatile time for the kids and they need guidance. I just received a memo today about the mental health and wellness awareness programs for children in our school. And I think it's important to have the most support available for all kids in Manchester and Essex and would like to see both towns just more unified in general. Um, I can't put a number on a budget percentage that I think is fair because I think all of our kids deserve the best. But I would like to see programs not cut, um, principals not taken away, facility managers not cut. I think everyone in the school deserves a chance and especially our children deserve the best. So that is my comment and statement for tonight. Thank you.
Is that Sarah that just spoke? Yeah, I was just going to say, um, I did see a couple of the questions on the fly. And most of that information is in the budget document. So if you're looking for um, counts on school choice, it is on page H twenty and the enrollment history is following that on twenty one. And then distribution of expenses, there's a pie chart which shows um, percentage of administration costs. So if you had a question in the chat, we weren't able to point you in the right direction tonight. Please just send me an email tomorrow. I'm going to either give you a call or send you a note back with where. I guess my closing comment is um, I think Pennywise and pound foolish is a phrase I've been using a lot lately and in many instances, the cuts we've made, even though I can find a way to justify them or make them feel sentimental, I feel has been a lost opportunity for reinvestment for a long time. Uh, and that's really the hard piece, which I think I'm, I'm going to be honest, I'm kind of numb to it right now. I know what I'm going to get asked to do every year. I mean, I saw the finance committee the other night. I think my shortcoming is my heart is torn between efficacy and being real. And um, in a position of it has done tremendous things. Um, you know, best measures we can make with um, with nothing dealt to us. So graduation requirements frustrating as it may have appeared. I would love to be spending plenty of meetings talking about what is the just right recipe for graduation requirements and not about how we tear down something we've spent so much to build. And I don't want to be dramatic because we will open this school doors, we will put together the best possible program we have with the resources we're given. But it has zapped a lot of positive energy. You know, I had hoped by this point we were coming back with a pathway for reintroducing a better elementary road language program. The point wasn't to lose it, it was to rebuild it and bring it back. In this conversation, there's no pathway for that yet. Um, we've heard the call on an interest in having a librarian back. That was a cut made long ago and far away. We have a whole task force working on, how does it, how do you build it for twenty thirty five? We would love to be able to build that into a budget. So I'm feeling hopeful with the support that we're hearing tonight. Um, and know that we're at the ready. We want, we want to be having a conversation about what should this, what should we be doing to get better and to look different and to get ahead of the curve. Um, but you need stability for innovation. And if every conversation we have is what's the innovative way we can create a cut that doesn't really feel like a cut, it's a lot of So thank you for those who came out tonight, even those who who are asking us to still find ways to to keep it tight and trim. We respect all opinions. We're trying to synthesize the inputs. Um, but I'm optimistic to see so many people out willing to engage in the conversation. And we are really at the ready to try to put the best possible program together that we can, sources we have. We have tremendous kids. The kids are wonderful. Um, they're engaged, they're doing wonderful things. We have great faculty. A good administration. It's a great, it really is a great place. If you've had the opportunity to talk to friends or colleagues in other districts, you know that we have something really special here. And I think um, the only way we can keep it and grow it is if all parties in all perspectives come together with a unified vision. So thank you for all of your efforts and your grassroots.
Uh, Greg, I saw that you put a quick note in the comment. Would you like to make a comment or uh, because I was going to say something as well. So please do.
Well, I did want to, you know, about Pam's earlier, and she seemed to have the last comment, so I don't need to try to give too much more. But, but since I, since you gave me the floor, Chris, thank you. Like Greg Pedestal, Town Administrator in Manchester. Um, it, it's a, it's a very difficult environment. Certainly the healthcare is, is a real far high mountain decline. Um, as is, as awful, also coming off of inflationary years that had far exceeded the two and a half percent, which is really an artificial limitation that was imposed decades ago. Um, and I'm just going to repeat what I have said in the past and that I think um, I'm a firm believer in more steady incremental increases. And one of the reasons why we're in this hole is that we have not had those incremental increases, you know, smaller overrides at multiple intervals. And I think we're, we're suffering from that right now. Um, and it will be very difficult to, to have a very large override, but I think an override is, is needed. Um, as hard as that might be to, to finance, but it's, it is the reality. And I think it's really important that we work on a multi-year plan that climbs us slowly out of this hole. I don't think reaching for that nine percent is, is practical, um, as much as we have heard strongly how needed it is and how passionate people are anxious to see it. Um, but I think we need to crawl out of this. We can't race out of this. Um, but we need a multi-year plan that gets us to where we need to be again. Um, that grows incrementally. So I just want to put a very strong plug in for the number crunching group to work on a multi-year plan and to see about a path forward that gets us there um, without overburdening it in any one year. So thank you.
And uh, I, I can just close things out before we close our meetings, our meeting tonight. Uh, we do want to make sure that everyone understands the work that we all put in. We all uh, very much care and are always putting the students first when we make any decision. You know, with that being said, we do have three main stakeholders that are part of our school district. You know, the students, our employees, the teachers, and then our all of our town, our taxpayers in both towns, right? And we do try to take into account all of their needs, right? Um, so I can tell you that if you have had the time to listen closely to our meetings, not just this year, but in previous years, uh, there has been a plan in place. We have been working towards with the best of our ability to get to that plan. Uh, and really all I would ask is that we are only a group of seven individuals. So I would ask you to talk to a neighbor. Just ask them if they understand what's going on and if they have questions to please reach out. We're happy to answer questions at any point in time. It doesn't matter where, what exactly your opinion is on this. I can tell you before, it took me close to a year to really even get up to speed and going through an entire budget cycle to really start to grasp the realities of what we do here and how it needs to be done. So please have them reach out. We can, you know, address any concerns, any questions they would have. clarify any uh, misconception that might be out there about, you know, why we're in this situation today. Uh, and so please, that would be my ask for everyone here tonight to please go ahead and do that. Even if it's just one or two neighbors, uh, that would be a huge help for us. Thank you very much for all of your time tonight. I do really appreciate it.